I was like, yes, yes, we're gonna go. I'm okay.
I'm okay with that.
I don't know, if an adult's there, I'm kinda like...
Oh, well, yeah.
If an adult's in the room, I don't know that I care.
Yeah, no, I, uh, the only thing would be field hockey for her.
It's a Saturday night.
But I assume, uh...
It's a Saturday, so...
Harry.
Hello.
I don't have my name played, do it. You guys were waiting for me. It's special.
It's 'cause you're official.
Nice. Wait, that is permanent.
Yeah.
You can't get out of this now.
Fancy.
We upgraded all of the, uh, all of the paper ones to, to plastic.
Did you see Peter's? His is like seriously important. I mean, how big his is?
His font's bigger than my font.
That's how they accommodated the different sized names by just changing the letter size, which I thought was interesting.
It was a mama's joke. Hey, and Tommy Yard Sale this weekend?
Yeah. Oh, I need to talk to you. What do you need from me?
I need help with cleanup.
Cleanup?
Remember, you got a truck and a trailer?
I got a truck and a trailer, yeah.
There you go.
So I don't need to be there for the thing itself?
I'm gonna need you someday.
That is perfect. So we're having like a, uh, barbecue slash yard sale slash, uh, football watching party.
There you go.
So, yeah, and, uh, so I was wondering about that.
Sunday would be great.
Sunday would be perfect. Yeah, college football.
Great folks.
Yeah.
I figured.
Yeah, if you guys are into it, I'm willing to offer.
Maybe, football's not my thing.
We call a meeting to order. The pledge of allegiance through the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please note that we've got four members present, which Kuching apparently is no longer a member. And Tom McLaughlin Alvenant is not present.
Correct.
Are we supposed to elect officers?
Didn't we do that last time?
We did.
We did, but...
I think you weren't here, but we still elected you anyways.
Yes, you were still elected as, re-elected as chair in, in absentia. That's correct.
You weren't here to defend yourself.
The price you pay for another meeting.
This is what happens. You miss one meeting.
I would like Stephanie to take over and review the minutes I wasn't at the meeting.
Sure. I'd be happy to. So we have the, the April 4th meeting minutes from that David was absent from, that I was there. Any edits or suggestions for the minutes? Anybody wanna make a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I shall second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great, the minutes pass. And do you want us to do the May minutes as well? The May 4th minutes? Were you there for that one?
He was, that was the next... That was the dual.
Should've been here. Oh, that was the, right, we're both together.
That was the dual. I think we all were for that, right? We all were.
We didn't do any business at that meeting.
We did a... Did I have any meeting? I don't even know...
Can we accept those minutes?
Did he even list this as being present?
They did. I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion made to accept the minutes of May 4th.
I'll second that.
Been seconded.
Oh, there we go.
Corrections, deletions, omissions.
Those are great.
Do you miss that one, didn't you?
Yeah, there is not.
It's kinda interesting. Okay, we're all for the vote then. One in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three people here present have voted aye. The, uh, first order of business, uh, application for a public hearing, a special exception for 18 Bridgewater Hill, PID 241-020000. It's application for a special exception in accordance with zoning ordinance section 414 to construct a six-foot fence within the Martin Estates Road front setback. You here to speak for that, sir?
Yes, sir.
And your name, please?
My name's John Colashaw. I'm the homeowner.
Thank you, John.
So...
I'm David, and I'm the chair. I'd like you to go ahead and explain, uh, your, what it is you want, why you want it.
So we're asking to be able to build a six-foot fence throughout the perimeter of the property. On the Martin Estates side, in order for us to do it currently, it has to have a 30-foot setback because we are doing that six-foot fence. Uh, we're requesting to be able to build the fence within the 30-foot buffer, excuse me, 30-foot setback zone. Uh, in total distance from where the road, end of the road is to where we would like to put the fence is approximately 20 feet or so. So it'd be four feet back from where the, uh, our property line is. Um, and reason for it, for added, little bit of added privacy, uh, both me and my girlfriend are state, state troopers. So trying to be able to have a pri- private backyard. And also for kids and children not having to worry about them running into the, uh, into the road or anything in, in the future. Uh, it would be white vinyl fence. My apologies, I don't have any pictures of the fence. Um, I intended to go down to the store that I was gonna be buying it from. However, it's down in Massachusetts and due to, um, scheduling issues, I wasn't able to accommodate that. But it's just your typical white foot, white vinyl fence. Um, and we also intend to put some, um, trees and shrubs on the roadside of the, the fence, so it's not an eyesorter to anyone. I don't think a white vinyl fence would be an eyesorter to anyone anyways. But just to beautify the, the fence a little bit to keep it, um, looking neighborly and, uh, well-maintained. And that's essentially, essentially what we're asking to do.
Any questions for board, board members?
I noticed, uh, and it might just be an internal, uh, chain link was mentioned, but you again brought up vinyl, which I read earlier on, uh, in the description. So it is a vinyl privacy fence?
Yes, sir.
Not a chain link fence?
No.
In the application, does it say chain link?
Uh, no, that was an error in the first draft of the agenda that went out. It has been fixed in the subsequent agenda, but that was an error from, uh, transcribing that from a previous. So, uh, no, it, it does, uh, it does not mention chain link.
Are you, are you familiar with this drawing? The one with the little hash marks that are in red?
I believe I have that here. It's the picture that has all the subdivided lots, correct?
Right.
Yes, sir.
My question would be, which portion of that diagram requires a special exception?
May I approach?
Sure.
It'd be right over here.
Part along the, along Dick Brown Road?
No, right on, uh, Martin Estates.
Okay.
If you all have the pictures put on the, uh, application.
Yep.
Right next to where number two is, that's where we need the application for the, uh...
Special exception?
The special exception.
Another one of those somewhere.
And what, what is that distance?
So what we're requesting, so the distance from Martin Estates Drive to the fence would be approximately 20 feet.
And how long will the fence be along that road?
I believe it was, uh, it'd be about 75 feet.
It's this section?
Yeah, exactly.
It's this side, it's fine.
Uh, you need, I did it all.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Colashaw.
It's this section?
This section, correct.
And it's Collin Shaw, right?
Collashaw.
Collashaw. Collishaw, kinda like cauliflower, coleslaw.
Exactly. I've heard both of them.
Collishaw.
Other questions from board members?
But you did say you put the fence around the entire perimeter.
It would, here, let me...
Close.
Pretty close.
Not the whole front of the house.
Correct.
It's a, look, look at this map.
Like a barn?
It's in that big, it's on the backside, maybe?
Okay.
It's like it attaches to the barn and then it breaks to the house.
Correct.
All right, a little section one that's cut off and a little section of two.
Correct.
Thank you.
And now for section one, or this section right here, it would be far enough back that we don't need any special exception.
Oh, Roger that.
It's just this.
The entirety of the fence line, except for that one section, uh, along Martin Estates Drive, is all, uh, fine to be six-foot. And it would all be, uh, the same six-foot throughout the entire perimeter.
Yes.
Did you get a chance to speak with your neighbors?
I did. And I've already talked to, to them all. They're, they're all good with it.
Is this visible from any of the neighbors' houses?
If you're looking at, on Martin Estates Drive, if you're looking at the picture I provided, to the right of the road, you could see it from the, uh, that property. And then Clifford Mask, his house, could, could see it as well, um, on that side. Now, if you look on the left side of Martin Estates, to the, um, next property on, uh, Bridgewater Hill Road, they would be able to see the fence on, that abuts the property line on that side. However, our intent is, um, to plant some trees to break up, break that up, make it look, make it look nice, is our intent.
Joseph, the little stretch that is on Bridgewater Hill Road doesn't require a special exception?
That's correct. So if, if the fence is within the setback and is over four feet, it needs a special exception, uh, or within the front yard setback, I should say. But if it's, uh, beyond that setback requirement, it can be six feet, uh, without a special exception.
Is your intent to do six feet the entire perimeter?
Yes, sir.
Are you putting in any gates?
Yes, there would be two gates with the, with how we currently have it planned. If you're looking at the, um, the picture, on the Bridgewater Hill roadside, just that small section, it would be a water gate for tractors, things like that, well, like lawnmowers, not, not like legit tractor, but lawnmowers, things like that. And then if you look at the, where the, um, attached barn is, on the Martin Estates Drive side, at that corner that attaches to the barn, um, the far corner would be where we put a, uh, a gate big enough for people to, to walk back and forth. If you want, I could come up and...
Would there be, no, that's okay. Would there be a way, like a fire truck could get to the back of your house?
The, uh, I would have to measure how big the fire truck would be, or like, look at it, but I'm pretty sure that the gate would be wide enough on the Martin, or excuse me, the Bridgewater Hill roadside.
What's back there, as far as the lot, uh, is it just a grass yard? Is there...
It's in the works of being a grass yard. Uh, we clear, it was extremely overgrown with, uh, trees, for shrubs, uh, trash, things like that. And we, we cleared it out, and our intent is to plant grass in the next month or so. There's also a leach field back there, uh, but in terms of structures, there's nothing back there.
Anything else from the board?
Are there any fences in the neighborhood? I'll define that as within, well, on, uh, Martin Estates Drive or abutting parcel, although I can see the map, it doesn't appear like there is.
There might be one on the, in the back of Martin Estates, however, I can, I'm not sure.
Any on Dick Brown Road or Bridgewater Hill Road? Think an abutting property's near?
Not near.
You a pioneer?
Joseph, any communications from anybody in the public?
No, nothing received on this one.
All the proper notices sent out?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I'm gonna close the, uh, proponents out of the hearing. You're gonna have a seat, sir. I'll call for any member of the public that wants to speak, come forward. These notes that are ironed on.
Is there anybody on Zoom?
Doesn't look like it.
No.
Nobody on TV? Closing the public session. Discussion. Well, let's do some findings of fact, maybe some discussion will come from that.
Okay.
The, uh, parcel is a 1.15 acre lot currently developed with approximately 2,294 square foot colonial style, single-family home. Applicant wishes to construct a six-foot-high fence that all but the area which attached to the buildings surrounds the lot on which the property is located.
I think I'd add that it's a corner lot.
It is a corner lot.
It is a corner lot.
I think a corner lot is...
But that the only frontage applicable is Martin Estates Drive?
Right. It can, it conforms to the town ordinance except for the part of the property that runs along Martin Estates Drive.
Correct.
And he, the applicant wishes a six-foot-high fence, which would not be allowed there without a special exception. It's in the agricultural zone?
That's another good one. Yep.
And the neighboring, I think it's true, the neighboring lots are not developed, is that correct?
Uh, a few of them have been developed more recently, uh, but as of the time of this, these aerial photographs, many of them were not. Um, I do think many of the surrounding lots on Martin Estates have since been developed, but, um, there are still some vacant as well.
Well, let's not make that finding, then.
Could make a finding that there are no apparent public input, neither for or against.
That's a good one.
There are also no other fences within close proximity of the parcel, subject parcel?
Why don't you put the word "like" in there?
Okay.
Like fences. And we ought to have that it's gonna be a six-foot-high vinyl fence.
Quite solid, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
I'm gonna break my own rules. Is, is the land, you can't tell from this, is the land relatively flat?
Relatively, yes, sir.
Okay.
Here is one spot, um, if you're looking at the picture, on Martin Estates roadside, where the driveway ends, there's a, the three-foot drop-off and then it levels out again.
Limit three feet, that's nothing.
That's true.
Trying to give you all the facts.
Sense you broke. Uh, there are no plans for any, uh, dog breeding or any other, uh, business-related uses?
No, not at all.
Well, we may, a good idea, he may have put in, he wants this for privacy. And it is on the entryway to Martin Estates Drive. I think we should put in there, he's got a pretty nice boat. Let's see if we talked about the different criteria that we have to decide.
Criteria one is, is allowed.
Pardon me?
It is allowed with special exception.
Right.
So fits in as criteria one.
Would, um...
Proponent says he's gonna put shrubs and trees along the fence. You may wanna add that as a condition later.
For the four-foot where it's on Martin Estates Drive, you know, would that affect snow removal at all, right? Not, probably wouldn't if it was four feet back, right?
Well, it's 20 feet back from the road.
20 feet back from the road?
Four feet back from his property line.
Four feet back from his property line, okay. So it's 20 feet back from the road. So that's not gonna affect snow removal or road maintenance or or sidewalk, the future sidewalk that would go in or anything like that?
The, there will be gates to allow access of, of, uh, public safety equipment.
Okay, that's...
Are we allowed to put that as a stipulation?
Yep.
I think that's...
A condition?
Well, and coupled, coupled with, uh, both testimony and some of our conversations, um, one of the articles is that the fence should be located a minimum of one foot off the property line, and the applicant has indicated four feet. So exceeds that criteria? Yes.
And that makes sense, 'cause he said that they were gonna put in shrubs, right? So that would be some space for that. That's a good one, Peter. And that, this isn't gonna affect town services at all?
Nope.
Right? Not gonna affect water or sewer or the highway department?
Are we discussing the criteria?
Uh, we can go now to, if we wanna have a criteria, special criteria.
Are we done with findings?
I'm good.
One last question. There will be no underground portion of the fence, will there? Beyond the posts?
Other than the posts, yes.
Well, I sorta have another one. Well, I sort of have another one.
Sorry.
We, we didn't ask, and it's not a criteria, but, you know, interesting enough, a lot of fences are lit these days, either on post or some other type of lighting. Could you tell us, do you intend to light this fence in any way?
We have talked about putting like, just a few on the, the part that does face the driveway, but in terms of anywhere around, no, and you only had discussions on, we haven't actually.
Where's the driveway on your map, is that on the Martin Estates side?
So, if you look at the.
Yes.
Okay, I see, so it's around the boat?
Yeah, yes, around the boat.
Okay.
Connects to both straits, correct? It connects to both straits, correct?
It does.
It does.
All right, let's shift to conditions that we may decide we want to put on the construction of the fence. I am, personally, I'm concerned about safety equipment getting to the back of the house.
I would make a motion to put that as a condition. I don't know how wide it needs to be to meet that criteria, but.
The thought is, if there's a fire in the house and you got to get, evacuate people out the back.
Yeah.
If it's a plastic fence, I'm driving through it.
That could happen.
Yeah. Fire truck, no problem.
Fire truck, no problem.
But, to save your fence.
That will damage the fire truck.
A standard double six-foot gate will be more than adequate.
More than adequate?
More than adequate, yep, 12 feet wide. Fire departments will, they prefer to have 16 or 18 or 20 if you can get it, but not in a residential setting.
Right, but.
Yeah.
It's thoughtful.
That would be a standard, you'd pick that off the shelf.
Okay, other conditions that? Well, we should have a finding also, that it's going to be white.
No.
No?
I don't think, I don't think that there's any other conditions needed.
Right.
I mean, they had mentioned shrubs, but I don't think that needs to be a condition.
Okay, can I quote?
I think that's a choice.
It's a choice.
Even though I brought up lighting, that's not in our regulations, I think that's also a choice.
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to close the discussion then. And we'll go to looking through the criteria. First of which is, pro's use is allowed in this ordinance by special exception?
That's true.
Yes, true.
True.
We agree that's all true. Specific site is appropriate location at adequate size for the use.
It's true.
True.
I agree it's true. Explain how the use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the pro's use will be located.
True.
True.
True, I don't think it's an adverse effect. But it does slightly alter the character of the area, I just don't find it adversely impacting the character.
I think if it was adversely, that some of the neighbors would have showed.
That would be exactly my point.
Yep.
The fact that neighbors didn't object. Is the neighboring lot sold?
All, from my understanding, every, actually, every house is sold and somebody is living there.
Okay. All right. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
It's true.
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 True. Provided that the condition is met. Use will not place excessive or undue burden on the town services and facilities.
True.
True.
True. Will no significant effect resulting from which use upon the public health, safety, and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
That's true.
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 True. So we've been through the criteria, we have found that they're true. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass, accept the application as submitted with that one condition for the
Access.
The gate, the access gate.
Second.
Can you move and second it, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Yep. You've got your gate, you've got your fence.
You have your special exceptions, so. Subject to one condition.
But you'd probably want that gate to get a septic truck in there and it pumps your septic, so it's a no-brainer. There you are, alrighty.
That's good. Any other business, David?
All right. Any unfinished business, Joseph?
No unfinished business that I, that I'm aware of, I believe we've wrapped everything up from last time. I think I will advise if, just a follow-up from the last meeting, since it was with the planning board, I can say that, that housing opportunity planning project has continued to go forward. Planning board will have another meeting with the consultant and the HOP Housing Committee on Thursday at 6:30 at their regularly scheduled work session time. So those discussions continue with, with the consultant and the team and the public towards to the HOP Housing Opportunity Planning Grant.
There is no report which would be going for a discussion at a meeting, is that correct?
Not a, not at this time, though there will probably be a draft of a Phase 1 and 2, so housing needs and barriers analysis, which they will discuss at, at this meeting and sort of launch, reveal.
It hasn't been published yet.
Correct.
That was an interesting part of the meeting. Okay. Any other business? Did you guys sign up for your land use planning books, if you will?
I just got one last year.
I got one last year too. Stephanie, where's your usual motion?
Um, to.
To adjourn.
Nice, I second that.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye.